I guess Russ isn't gonna be here.
Let the record reflect that I've taken role that all members of the utility board are present with the exception today of Mr. Leach. And Mr. Skogstad having a quorum, though we will proceed. The minutes from the July ninth, two thousand twenty-five meeting have been printed, posted and circulated. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing that, the minutes will stand approved as posted. Starting in our agenda this morning, the first thing on the agenda is unfinished business, and that would be our water quality question, water quality testing. Mr. Metz?
Uh, yeah, we we got the license for the port from Camor's. Everything is good. It's your quality water going out to the residents. We'll do on that. This is an update. Uh, we are, we'll be sending out CCR report this month. To the residents. So we received that. That's our yearly water quality.
I'm sure that you noticed the articles in the newspaper about Camor's and the water quality and all the stuff that's coming out of Washington where it's. I don't think that'll have any impact on us whatsoever. It's not the kind of news that you'd like to see in the.
I've had ones before.
Yeah, yeah. That's a fact. All right. Anything on water quality testing? Okay. ARP discussion.
Uh, we don't have a. You know, that's update on that. So it's just, it's a pond run.
Yeah, the money's allocated. It's just a matter of getting the project started. So, you know. Okay. Any updates or discussion on the five-year plan this morning?
Mike, so where is standing the projects ongoing?
Oh. You put it the smallest possible. Your glasses. Uh, wastewater improvements, we are completed all the field work associated with that. Uh, the plans are most of the way done. We should be able to get something ready. Uh, I would say early September, as far as a preliminary alignment for the, that's for the uh, the horse main replacement in the. Eleven Avenue and Twelve Street sewer replacement. So those should be getting close.
We did walk that bigger project a couple of weeks ago. Like a couple of his fellow engineers, myself, Jack, walked that on the, be the west side of the tracks down through two park. So I did actually get and walk a little bit. So we looked at, we went down that area. Water lies in that. Make sure we have enough room for tri-state off-road track right away to that pick area. Fire right away off either off. Mall complex, or nobody's acquiring the property. Right. What we're trying to do is make sure we make that horse main down through there. We have enough room to access it, which currently do not have now. It's kind of, we can't really drive that horse main. Check it. So I do that.
Jim, Jack, well.
Yes.
All right. Do we actually know who owns the mall now? How do we make contact?
We have contact possibly.
I've been, um, I've had three meetings now, uh, one phone call and two physical meetings, uh, with the company that is, uh, working towards securing the purchase of the mall.
So it's still owned by?
It, well, it's owned by the lending company that, because it went back to foreclosure. Uh, so the lending company, you know. Took control of it and has been operating it, uh, you know, well with, you know, I think year eighteen months, something like it's been a while, uh, that they've done it. But, uh, things look positive for our purchase, uh, and conversations have been ongoing in regards to the land behind the mall area. The, uh, large portion of property there and those look very promising as well. I feel really good about that.
Yeah.
Mall's pretty full, really. I take the hits there by the train. It's, I mean, compared to a lot of malls, I feel like we were pretty lucky.
Um, in, in those conversations, the, uh. The production of the mall, uh, in comparison with a majority are doing, is doing very well. They're very happy with what they, what they see. Uh, as far as what storefronts are there, there are, I believe, three vacancies that they mentioned in the last meeting, um, that are currently in the mall. But they're working towards obviously getting those filled. Uh, things look good and, uh, we'll be glad to see something hopefully this fall come to fruition and get that closed down. But it looks good for us on the backside of that. I feel calm. I feel really good about it.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, Wells nine and seven, we are near finishing that up.
Yeah, I spoke with the contractor today on that and, uh. His electrician has this middle, recruits middle to do control panel, like panel at the end installed that. We just get order, takes some time to get in. They are functioning. There's their skate update we have to do in that location. Everything's okay. Works their producing water that well.
And that cable, the two hanging along River Road, right above the wellhouse?
Seven eight?
Right above Harper's. Yeah, seven eight. Is that ours or is that a television cable or something? Somebody's just knocked there.
Ours on the ground.
Okay, good. That cable's been hanging there for months. Oh, look right on the edge of the, of the pine trees. You know.
Want to take inspections. I sent you a look at three more reports. Yep. On the, uh, if we ever found anything opening. I suppose on it.
I think most of them are fortunate. I'll get you all copy next being as a packet of all tank inspections, but, uh, the thing is, they're gonna need power washed. Uh, so we need to get that scheduled for a bit out, I guess, and power wash facilities and tanks. Uh, but we'll talk briefly about that new business.
The one improvements project, uh, the revised report within the whole application did. It will be on the next, uh, IJDC. Technical funding and technical review committee meeting, which is the end. It's the last Tuesday for pond run. Um, so it will go before them first and then through the full IJDC council following Wednesday, first Wednesday. And we'll talk a little bit more about them, but, or if you, because that's really was the driver for it. Um, then the pond run dredging, uh, I, I was, like you, I definitely was Russell, you know, be here. The only thing I think we really have remaining on it's, uh, is to try to figure out with the mall, that's, that's interesting here about the mall because. We need to figure out a way to get through that property, especially on that. We need first start down, you know, try to get through there.
You mean on the, the railroad riverside of that or just going through them?
Just where the pond exists. So we're gonna, we're gonna dredge. I might have to get back some trucks in. Someone just needs some temporary easements.
I can't imagine that'll be an issue.
It's just making sure they understand, because there's probably a truck route to the, probably. I'll make sure that we're not interfering.
How do you plan to cross? Like down the, how, how are you planning to get back there without crossing the railroad? You can't cross the railroad at the mall.
Yeah, we're not, we won't have to cross it for here for this one. If it's online, that's inside. But yeah, the big question's gonna be, oh, no, we really discuss exactly where, where we're developing the pressure material.
It's clean tar, correct? I mean, so I'd like to use a beard up, but I use future, uh, possible seating stuff. So I have a pile up back there.
We just wanna make sure, since it's gonna be wet coming off there.
Yeah, I'll put a containment around it.
Yeah, and, and make sure they're not, they're being able to protect it. No, no one wants that.
Nah.
So that's the big.
You know, the, the elevation's the key, that dredging project.
Yes.
All right. But right there where Popeyes is off Grand Central Avenue, when you look down in that area right there. I don't know whether that's erosion or what, or if that's the actual width of that tributary that's right there, but. If that's too wide, if to road it out, well, this project refill that, rebuild that bank or?
That's why you mentioned it, because yeah, that was one of the things that they mentioned, uh, when we were doing the design of it is there's some. You know, we were just looking at the cut for the bottom and as we actually got that looking at it, yes, there's some side work that's gonna have to happen because of erosion. So it's, it's not gonna be, I think, as much excavation as we thought of removal, but we are gonna have to come back and fix some sides or wrap most of them. So it's not slipping or not slip.
Okay.
I think that's it.
All right. Anything else on the five-year plan? Are you done with the dredging of pond run or we have more to go on that?
Yeah, I, I thought, unless there's any questions on.
Okay.
Do we have a projected timeline?
Uh, let's see, it's, there's no, the funding's internal, right?
Yeah.
So, once we get it worked out with the mall, I think we'll be really close, because we won't have to do anything with the. The dry pond, right?
Yeah, so.
I mean, we don't, we won't need to do any.
Oh, no, no, I just worry about, so the issue is, I think, is asking, we're gonna be able to do it before winter or we're gonna wait till after July next year? So.
Yeah, I mean, that's when you, I don't, I don't think, we're already doing the permits for dredging. It would not be approved before, but being a. Design channel that was there before, I don't think we'll have that much issue.
So if the easements on the mall are holding, so what do, is that something Russ needs to do?
Yeah, we will wanna work with him, uh, to try and realize.
Uh, yeah, there's something we will wanna talk to him just to make sure that what we're doing is legal and then actually meet with the. As a separate meet with mall property, just so they know what's going on and they're not surprised.
Okay, so.
Especially that area, even when you start. Southern part of where, if you're gonna have that main entrance in with a, with a red light.
Those are the easement that he needs to write up? That's something you do and submit or?
What we'll do is we'll draw it, any easements we need, we'll draw the exhibit that goes with it, then he'll write the actual easement description.
So Jody right now is the main point of, he's the mall manager.
Okay.
Uh, and he's the main point of contact, obviously, still at this point. It will be until. September, October timeframe, I'm sure, and we'll probably still carry on throughout then. So let's. Let's get traction on this sooner rather than later.
Yeah, yeah. We'll see what we do, work with Russ and make sure he knows, you know, give him a drawing of what's there so he can be researching. What's, what is already there and then, uh, you know, some kind of a right of entry to get on the property, use the drives, power they want us to do it.
Yeah, I think the dredging upon run the next year could be really important, because we're in a time and season of a lot of rain. We've been fortunate, that creek hasn't really flooded like it did back in the day, but it's been up to the banks running heavy when it rains a lot. And it, and my fears, if we really get a rain like we're having across the country, we could be having some trouble in there at the end.
Yeah.
So I think this thing needs to keep moving along.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. All right. So we now move to new business. The RFQ for engineering services.
Yeah, this is pit on air, because there's some issues with them. Uh, they're not happy with our. Has some issues references if we ever did an RFQ for the water side of the. First night, we have a general contract, so they're wanting to do, states want to do an RFQ. Interview some engineering firms. Pick one, all the work that Mike's already done, so. All right, so. Uh, so we'll have to go through the formalities of that, that right, so.
Right, and we can, we can help write, you know, the western qualifications, you know, it's a, it's a requirement through state law or what they call five G for engineering services. This was last done in Vienna in twenty-eleven, so it's probably time to redo it anyway. So we can help with that, but it'll need to be advertised. And, and what really brought it on was. Even though they didn't have a problem with it for the sewer project, we went to do the water project off the same thing. They said, well, this is too, too long. So I don't know what happened in the year, but they want us to redo it, so.
Who's asking for this, Mike?
They, they asked for just a statement from us saying we're okay with it, but Russ did.
It, IJDC.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's actually the Public Service Commission working through IJDC, but.
Russ felt.
Russ is working it.
Yeah.
Russ felt his best to screw and get advertised.
If Russ felt comfortable though. Technically, we were okay.
Yeah.
Or not technically, legally, we were okay, but this is a safeguard and a precaution.
Yes.
Just to cover all bases, to make sure that we stay in line in the future. We've been covered for what we've done in the past. We're just making sure that we're covered for what we're gonna do in the future.
Absolutely, yes. It's just for projects that are above two hundred fifty thousand dollar construction. So any, any of the little things you really don't have to go through, it's just when we get these major projects.
We kinda need to decide today, who would, who would you all want for that, with selection? Or we just do it here? Just for us?
Yeah.
Members of utility.
That's what I would, I would say. Is there a need to select a separate committee?
You don't have to. We can do it here. Sometimes we do it, then we recommend to the utility board or the council. The committee select, we can do it here.
Randy, your thoughts or opinion?
Well, you know, it's funny, there, I don't think anybody except the people that sit on this board sit here and realize the. The value that Burgess and Iple has brought to the table in the past, and because we've got a five-year plan, it's got fifty items on it. I mean. I think, I think Burgess and Iple, and especially Mike, do a great job representing us. You know, um, when you get to Charleston in front of the IJDC, that's a strange group of people down there. Is that a nice way of saying that?
Yeah, it's, it's a lot of different thoughts.
It is.
That changes with the, the administrations that come in and out of the governor's office.
Yes.
And it's, it's tough right now.
But they know you and they know that you represent us.
Yeah.
And any questions that they have or anything, um, I think procedurally wise, I think we're in a great shape. Okay?
Yeah.
The money part of it, you know, we all have rules and restrictions that we have to work around, but. I, I mean, I don't think there's anybody more qualified than us to make the decision on an engineering firm because of the day-to-day work that we do, but. I, I, whatever.
I, I agree with this formality. Uh, we have to do it. So if we do it in committee or you all do it, then you have to, we have, of course. Members, five members, uh, we have to set a meeting date to do, to do our cues.
I mean, Mr. Leach's chairman, I would, you know. Tell you, let Jim set the thing up and. It's a formality.
Be a public meeting.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's an advertising thing. You have to tell people you're gonna do it.
Yes, wanna make sure you all undo it that way and I'll, I'll get it set up.
I'm good. I'm good with that.
All right. All right, take care of that. We'll set a date and get some, just some legal work out.
We're not on a deadline from the IJDC.
As long as, I guess I didn't realize that. So Russ was okay with, for the water project to write the letter saying it's okay for the future?
Uh, he wants to do it.
For the water, for the water? Okay. Yeah, so, um, as long as we tell him that you guys are going through the.
He said he was on his way, but we'll see if he makes it to the end.
Okay, so let's go back. I'm sorry. RFQ for engineering services. Are we, is Russ preparing something or?
Uh, what we'll do is, this is like we did before, we'll send advertising saying this is what we're gonna look for professional qualifications for engineering services for.
Same procedure.
Design. And we'll set a date for interview the engineering firms, which will be in public, uh, with you all, and we'll make a selection who that individual firm would be. And then we'll proceed with that wherever we decide to be, they'll proceed with work through IDA.
There'll, there'll be a lot of interest. There will be.
Yeah, absolutely.
People realize Vienna is a great city to work with. Okay, and so we've been, everybody wants to work with the city, so. And there'll be some interest, but, okay. All right. So the next item then is the painting of the OVU water tank.
Yeah, we've had requests, uh, from the new. WVU P, preference to, they want the removal of the OVU, um, symbol on the water tank. Not painting on it, just wanna paint it over white. They, the cost estimates on it, uh, they give us cost estimate for tri-state roofing sheet metal. At a price of twenty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Us to pay to remove that OVU symbol and paint it white, an issue I have, I mean, after the tank inspection, they clearly said the paint was, you're good. So. Guess the question is, you all, you all wanna pay that bill, have that removed? Or to have them remove it or it's up to you.
So I have, I have a proposal that I will be bringing, not this council meeting, uh, but the next council meeting, that I'll be bringing a council. Uh, that will, that will address that, that I believe is a. Is a good fix for that, uh, and we'll be able to, be able to accommodate it, but it'll be, that'll be going to council for, for consideration, and it wouldn't be a utility board cost.
It would be utility.
It wouldn't be utility.
Won't be.
Uh, we would just simply need the, I guess, the okay to, you know, if that, once that went through, to actually have it painted.
Sounds to me like the mayor has a solution to this issue. And my question was, did this guy forbid this, right here, tri-state deal or?
We did not, we did not bet, shut the bet. That is their, what they got for it, so.
So, yeah, I do have a solution. I just can't talk about the solution until it, it would go to council consideration.
Sounds good.
And is that, out of curiosity, is that just, you know, the logo, since the rest of the paint is good, or is that?
I just paint on the logo.
It's half the sphere.
Twenty-four thousand.
Twenty-five, twenty-four, nine fifty.
So if, if we, so if we, if we did it ourselves, if we just said that, that mall needed painted and we do it ourselves, it would be actually upwards of closer to fifty to sixty thousand dollars. Because we would have to have a one-month rental on the crane system that is used. They only rent it per month.
Well, we're, first thing, what are you talking about we? I'm not climbing up.
So, so when Craig would climb up to start painting. What, um, the college is able to do right now is they have projects that they're using.
Crane.
The, a crane for, so they're actually able to absorb the majority of the cost of the. Because when we originally got the, the pricing from WVUP, you know, I looked at it, I was like, oh, this is seventeen thousand dollars or whatever it was. It was, it was like, that's not a big deal. Then when I looked at the bottom, I was like, where did this larger number come from? It was because the crane system that you have to use is very. Special and you have to rent it a month, and they only do it a month at a time. So WVUP has some other projects that are ongoing with the roofing and those various things. So the cost of that crane can be broke up to the various projects over the course of that, over the course of that month. Like I said, my intention is to bring a plan to council for consideration, um, that I, you know, I believe, um. Is, is acceptable and has a, has a justification behind it, but, you know, at this point, I just don't wanna, I don't wanna go into detail about that until that, where it actually hit the agenda.
And they for, for just painting it white, we don't have to have it blue and gold or something like that, right?
Just paint, paint it a little something with white, yes.
After what they did to that beauty place down there, we don't need any more blue and gold.
Yeah, that, but that ball is much larger than what one would think, you know.
Green and white, is that what you wanted?
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, figure that one color.
I'm a Marshall fan. I know you, you mean, Athens, so, yeah, same thing.
Joe, you ask about comparative prices?
Yeah.
I think we should just get Melissa Eland McCann a white spray paint.
She's been up there.
Look, yeah, she's already climbed it.
I suggested paintball gun.
That'd be fun.
See you. And just see.
Hey, there you go.
I know.
I'm not a drone.
Doctor Jackson did not wanna suspend it from a line. I said, look, I said, I'll do it if you do it. She's like, no, I'm not doing it.
I'm not, so. Everything good and pressure wash the whole system up there.
That was what I was, yeah.
Press wash it anyway, get, get at least some paint upon, so.
Right.
I was gonna do the whole thing.
See, see what we can make happen with, you know, a little negotiable skills.
Yeah, leave some pressure washer, you can do that, so. All right, so we'll put down a hold and, uh, hopefully the council will see the funding on that somehow, so, right?
All right, managers report.
Uh, just a couple of things, uh, we currently are out, uh, mowing pond run this week. Started actually two weeks ago with equipment. That's a little ahead of schedule. I usually don't mow pond run until after September with all the rain and stuff. The grass really grew, started looking pretty bad, so. Sent the guys on a couple of weeks ago, the equipment started mowing it down, and this week, we, we started Monday, we need to pull the guys off because it temperatures. Ninety-two degrees in that particular area is too hot for individuals working weeder, so. Let it cool down a little bit, we'll get back on, finish up weeder. Pond run and the dry damp structure is green, so. Yes, parking lot's kinda empty out there today. I, we are currently in a crew shift. We got paving that's going on now, so I had, there's, uh, some water valves that we need to replace, getting ahead of the paving crews. So I got a crew work on what we call the midnight shift. They will come in at ten o'clock tonight and work till, you know, five, five in the morning. They will be replacing valves at, uh, the corner of Thirty Street and Eighth Avenue, Thirty-first Street and Grand Central. Thirty-fourth and Grand Central and a valve down eleven, uh, Fourteenth Avenue and Twelfth Street. There, my, currently valves are leaking or broke. We want to get them fixed before school started and with paving start, so. Uh, we did, there will be some water interruptions, um, between midnight and five night, Thursday and Friday. And starting back again on Sunday, lowering it down in midnight, five minutes. We do that, that causes least problems in our commercial district and residential, so hopefully nobody's taking a shower at two AM, but, um. We did do something new. Uh, Tommy did something new yesterday we've been working on, which I think worked really well. We said. Uh, on our immunity link software, building software now, they, they do offer the mass dialing. We tried it first time yesterday. Um, got some responses. There are people got notified in right direction, the right areas, got some people notified.
I got several messages.
Yeah.
That said, you know, this is the first time that I've ever got it. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Russell Skogstad. Um, I got several messages from people that said, I've never gotten a call. Um, I got several messages from people that said, I've never gotten a call.
Yeah, this is the first time, so it's a, this is part of the Public Service Commission rules that we have to follow. Mass, you know, send people out, uh, notification of what's going on, so I think it worked pretty well. So we'll be using that from here on out, uh, minimal feed on that, but uh, it, it's something. When we hit down, we have an emergency break, we can send out uh. Mask calls. Uh, I'm hoping people didn't get the message, was gonna call in when they don't have water tonight and say, hey, I didn't get any notice. I'd say, well, great. Now you need to bet your phone number so you can get into the system and we, next time you have notified.
Have home phone number.
Yeah.
You know, they could have had, just signed up for water thirty years ago.
Yeah.
Now not have a home phone number, just run us a, ooh, I don't know.
We, we put on the bill saying please notify us and new phone number accounts. We don't get very good response from that, so hopefully when people, we call in, we can get their new number and add to our system, so. Where you go? I'm gonna make sure I have a good address and phone number. Yeah, so uh when they sign up for new accounts now, we do require they do give us a phone number, so either cell or on base. Uh, worked pretty well for first run, worked great.
We got positive response.
I'm sure why Lady Fifty-Seven Street got a call, but it's.
So I asked her.
Yeah.
Uh, I believe she has water service also at another location on Thirty Fourth Street.
Okay.
Which would have alerted her.
Oh, got it.
So I'm thinking she got it because of that.
Yeah.
Cause I noticed they own a rental home on Thirty Fourth Street.
That could be it, so that's good. Um, we tried to, this, this system will zone areas out, so that's what we did last, yesterday, we zoned an area, so this is where we'll have water shut off, this is where we. Look, this is a pretty large section of uh town, I have isolated out between midnight and five and tonight, tomorrow and Friday and lower end town on Sunday, so.
Hey, Tommy. Good job.
Okay, that's uh, that it, we're just working along. If you notice the pad out back, working on getting the forms up for grades done on the pad. Hopefully getting it for the next couple of weeks. That building built up back, addition for parks and public works, so. I'm, hopefully next time they'll come here, they'll see.
And we did new electrical service at that.
There is new electrical service for that. Uh. Jeff Craft come up last week, uh, he met with the power company, that one and uh, for extension landing. That's it for me.
It would mean he had way on the floor in the wet well.
Yes, yeah, I need to, I need to get that over to the Craig, yes.
Seem like a compliment.
Yes.
We turned it over, Mike has been itching.
Someone, someone slipped my mind.
I think Mike was making, we did plans right there.
So, uh, thank you. The other day when I called you about the two catch basins on the corner of Third Avenue. The guys went in there and fixed those. They're perfect. I mean, they look great. They should last for, you know, years and years.
Yeah, cause they're full concrete. There's not, I mean, they had such pretty thick concrete and Zach Blevin did that job. I've been charged with an excellent job. That's great up really well.
I took pictures of the inside of that. Concrete, it was concrete that thing. Then there was the uh brick underneath it.
Yeah.
Huge amount of concrete.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but they were bad.
Yeah, they were.
They were bad.
I appreciate the call, but I didn't, I didn't notice it, yeah. Yeah, they was collapsing, so we poured concrete uh yesterday on Forty First Street before school started. Surely collapsed, so. School starts next week, it's created, summer's over.
Yeah. Are you leaving the pylons down there, pylon storage? Is that, that is, are you like the state road?
Yeah.
Leaving all the way to Ripley.
They are the state flyer, so, alright, so.
Replace the satellite.
We like to let it set up a little bit. We try to keep trash trucks.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right.
Oh, yeah, but we're paving that area too, so. Russ?
Yes, sir.
We was talking about the RFQs, maybe you could fill it in on how you feel about that.
Um, well, I don't know that I have all the information, so I'm not gonna ask a lot of questions that I don't wanna, I, I'm not going to ask of you a lot of questions I don't know the answer to in a public meeting. Um, if we wanted to do something as far as executive session, I'm fine with talking about that, but generally speaking, RFQ, our agreement was set up, we approved it. Uh, over a period of five, every five years, we had entered into a five year agreement. What I don't know the answer to is I can't remember when the last time was, but I thought it was in twenty twenty-one. And so we're at the point now where I think we need to do the RFQ again and, and I would like to have the up, any updated contracts that we have so that we can send to. I can't remember who was requesting, but as part of the I J D C.
Yeah.
They wanted me to answer a question uh about something and I, I'm not going to answer them without knowing fully what it is. But what I know, what, what it caused me to recognize is we have reached the point where we probably need to do, well, not probably, we need to do RFQ. Um, Mayor Rep, when he has done it in the past, so we should have a matrix, questions and all of that stuff set up. Just go out and maybe tweak it a little bit. Um, and then, but we need to have a board or a group to come together. Cause some of you folks, some of you folks are aware, some of you folks aren't, whenever you have uh construction contracts uh requiring engineering services. That are over, and off the top of my head, I think it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, you have to have, uh, you have to go through a procedure with picking qualified engineer. So the state doesn't allow you to just pick your own engineering services. There are a lot of other services that. Uh, there are a lot of other professional services that you can, just choose who you want, but the state wants you to go through a procedure, it's, it's West Virginia statute. To pick a qualified engineer, so we send out the RFQ. We have ahead of time set, set out a list of our criteria that we need to set up in the matrix. We interview, we solicit, uh, uh, we send out a request for professional services, request for qualification tech. For engineering services for these types of projects. The engineering firms, and we usually have two or three that will respond, have responded. Then you meet with them and you interview and we have a series of questions that are prepared ahead of time. We have a scoring system. That we've uh, that, that we've done. Um, and then you interview them, you, you calculate a score based, based on their answers to the questions. And then you rank them based on what their score is. And so you go to, and then at that point you go to um, uh, you start negotiating prices, basically. Now, it, unlike all of the other things that we do, it's not the lowest bidder. You're looking for the most qualified person and then can you afford that qualified person? And if we can't afford the first one because they, their hourly rate or project rate or whatever is too high, then we move to the second one in the ranking system, the interview. Can't afford them, we move to the third. And then if we can't find an engineering services, we're gonna have to figure out what we're doing wrong in the solicitation and do it all over again. But generally, that's the process. We've done it uh several times for um, for engineering services. We've done it for uh pool. We've done it for the utility board and Mr. Rep, I can't recall. We've done it, can you remember any? Those are the most recent ones that I. I think we may have done it for, okay, but so we have a process, we have a process, we have uh things that are already prepared. We just need to pick a group of people to do it. What's different from this than like Spencer's Landing or the other projects is it's gonna come to utility board approval. And then that means the projects that are gonna run through that are all run through utility board. So we don't have to go to council, the utility board, you know, if you uh, we pick them, we interview them, we solicit them, interview them, rank them. And then um, uh, then negotiate and then bring it to the utility board to decide that we wanna enter into an agreement. That's the last handful of times.
They elected to do it open, they're gonna select themselves.
I'll say it again.
They, they elected to do it in open meeting.
Yeah, however, yes. That, that doesn't matter. You can do it that way. Sometimes it's, it's uh. It, it, that really doesn't make a difference. Engineering services is not necessarily a job interview for some people. But there's no requirement.
If, if you guys have never done this thing, questions are fairly simple.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, how experienced are you in, in this case, water and sewer projects? Second thing is, how, what are you gonna dedicate as far as your manpower goes towards our project? So it's just gonna be an assigned engineer that will handle us. There are pretty basic questions about, you know, we wanna, we wanna partner with one of these engineering firms, so what we, what we wanna know is. Are they gonna uh dedicate people to actually work with us and we're not gonna be down the line to where, you know, what you get is, well, we'll be up in a couple of weeks. That doesn't work very well. And so those are the kind of questions that when we get into the interview process, typically in the past. You know, obviously it has to be noticed in the paper. Anyone that's interested in, you know, applying uh will apply. And then it say we get, you know, seven engineering firms or five. We typically narrow it down to three. That way you'll know, you know, you don't have to, it's redundant after a certain time, but anyway, you narrow it down to say three or four, whatever someone has a particular interest. But then uh, there's a form that has questions that are ranked based on a hundred percent scale. And so the first five questions are worth ten points apiece, the next ones are worth fifteen and the last one would be twenty-five. Alright, and then as you ask the questions and everybody has an opportunity to ask the questions, the engineering firm answers them. You, as a person sitting on the examining board, have your own scores. It's your opinion, whatever you think. And so when it's all said and done, you take the five or six. People that are actually sitting on this and you tally the scores and it's basic, it's a score. If one engineering firm gets ninety-eight percent and the next one gets ninety-five percent, ninety-eight wins. That's, that's just the, the fair way that you can do that. And so uh.
And the last thing, cause I've had this come up, people weigh in that form, not the, your scores. Like if you've sat and done the interview, I've had employer requests for those forms. I think that the score is public information. But some people write notes on their forms. I don't think that's public information. So, but I just want you to note that everything that you do when it comes to these things, I want you to be mindful, because sometimes I doodle. And um, you know, if you don't want people seeing that, you know, you're a doodler, uh, maybe you shouldn't doodle on your score sheet, because even though I don't think that it's possible. Or uh, anything other from raw score itself is public information, or a judge might say otherwise, so, so you know, just a, just a note.
And likewise, I know time's a constraint for you. Sometimes we do them all the same day. Everybody gets forty-five minutes to make their presentation for us to ask questions and all that business. And so, you know, it takes about three hours to go through the whole process, then it's done.
Yep.
You don't have to, you know, come back three times and all that, so.
Do we have that information retained? Case for somebody's gotta.
Yeah, we re, we retain them. We have retained all of that information in the past, the scores and whatever. So if anybody asks a question about it, we say. So one of the engineering firm says, well, we don't think that we scored it that way. We think we're picking it up.
And when this thing's notified, when it's noticed, they're gonna tell them, if you're interested in doing this, then you must, you must present. Seven copies of whatever information you wanna give out. So everybody gets the same stuff and uh, you know, it's, it's a pretty, it's a pretty easy procedure, really.
I probably have the RFQs. Is that right?
Yeah. I, I don't remember if we've done it on this one. If we do in our matrix, did we do any waiting for geography? In the past, we've done requests for qualifications, request for professional services and we've made location part of that because. In some instances like our electrician, for example, we may need emergency electrical services. Well, you don't wanna have to wait for a guy that's gonna come out of Ravenswood or Charleston. To come up and do some work. And it may be the same thing here. We have engineering services, we may not wanna have somebody from Atlanta.
That was part of last time we did it. Reason we did that because engineers working on an hourly fee and you gotta pay a guy coming from Charleston, it's a lot different paying a guy coming from there.
Yeah.
So. Lot of stamp, sure amount of money difference, okay? Yeah, these guys aren't cheap.
Engineers and lawyers.
Unnecessary, especially the lawyers. One thing, Russ, too, um, since it's variable, are you gonna think about the five-year or? Yeah, what I was gonna do is the same thing that we've always done, is a series of one-year agreements for a total of five years. We could, one, because, and I do it that way because I suggest doing it that way. Um, we're not allowed to obligate the treasury or a next year's budget. Sorry, I speak English terms sometimes. We can't obligate treasury in the following year, no. So you can't spend money you haven't collected. No, thank you. She says it's not.
Do not start.
Wasn't it?
You'll start.
So anyway, so, 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 so by law, you can't spend money that you haven't collected. Okay, and that actually in Parkersburg fifty years ago, a bunch of councilmen got impeached, didn't approve and whatever. So what I do is a series of one-year agreements that automatically renew, but I do it for like five years. And the reason you do it for five years is because these projects will invariably take forever to get through the system. And it's not a criticism system, that's just the way it works. So we wanna have an engineer that's able to perform work for us over an extended period of time, but to do so in a way that doesn't violate that particular part of law. So they all, whatever engineering firm it is, they have to agree with the understanding that if we don't have the money to redo this, you know, next year, then it's over. But my recommendation has been, has been five years, five one-year consecutive agreements.
Long-winded on that.
Sorry, so we were.
It was the accent he threw in there.
In the old days, we got paid by the word. I would wear my hood and you would.
Sounds under your grit, ask the question.
I should have sent the text and said, nah, we're good, don't worry.
Yeah, we're good, so.
Chad, you're the music guy, okay? Do you remember that, remember that old song convoy?
Yeah.
Oh, don't ever. Never, ever.
We got a convoy.
Oh, here we go. Oh, here we go.
I'm not gonna do it, I'm not. I'm not wearing a hood, there's.
We're glad you showed up, Russ.
And most people, when they see me in a formal setting, are generally not happy I'm here. I had a guy tell me yesterday what he thought of me. And so I appreciate it. I hope you enjoy your stay.
Lunch will be provided.
We'll talk about it again in eighteen months.
So that's, I, well, I think we do have to get this done, because I wanna be able to submit something to I J D C. And I, I think um, cause I, and I wanna ask Craig this after me, I just wanna make sure that we have something that we're squarely, that they're happy. And so I think the quicker that we can get this done, the better.
Then switching gears.
Yes.
Uh, I need it to be a priority that you work with them and get the easements, well, switching topics. Uh, priority to get um easements done or, or view of easements done for the mall so that we can start the dredging project.
What, you tell me what easements we need done? Yeah, it's probably gonna take a little bit of research, cause I'm sure there has.
Need me to do research or you? Just tell me.
I, I, I'd probably be, be easier for you.
Oh, if you think.
Let's work for me, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, the thing is, you know, I know there's easements for the channels of, but as we take this liquid. Stuff out, you know, when we're dripping it everywhere, do we have a right to use their roads or is it?
Your, so your question is, is there any agreement that exists that allows us to go in and uh essentially bridge, whereas we're coming to a dredging project?
Yeah.
Using whose property? Who?
It, it's a mall, just a, it was a washing primer.
Yes.
There isn't.
I was gonna say, I'll bet you that's a hard no right there.
There's temporary construction, you know, he's missed supply for future work.
Yeah, that would generally.
What he's asking, he's gonna make up some drawing for you.
If you want to do temporary.
This is excess when he gets through.
Yeah, I, I doubt that there are, it's like Craig says. Yeah, I, I doubt that there are, it's like Craig says, Craig says, I doubt that there are. There are, it's gen, the general practices. Instructions or temporary instructions, but if you need them, you just give me the drawings and a description and I'll write you. Yeah, I'll do these kind of.
Can you set a suspense for that?
I'm sorry?
A suspense date, when that.
Yeah, give it, what's a drop dead date for that? Oh, to have a, uh, we can, let, let me get you a set of the drawings and show. So we want, I wanna make sure we're just getting temporary instruction, not permanent, right? Yeah, and when, well, that makes it easy.
When do you think you can have that done?
Uh, we can get that, uh, soon, um.
Friday?
Maybe, I, I actually have a call. Eleven thirty, I have a call.
Thursday evening, but. Can we get that, can we get that by Tuesday of next week?
Um. The only thing I'm thinking about. Let me think about it a little bit. Well, the utility board is a corporation, they can hold, they can hold property. Um, typically we run all of our right of ways, our permanent right of way easements, uh, right of ways, easement agreements, that kinda stuff from city council. Because if they're permanent, then we want them to be held in the city. But I think with a temporary construction easement, that probably is just adding a layer of comfort to it. Cause they, for the folks that don't know, a temporary construction easement is exactly what it sounds like. You're asking the property owner for permission to go on over through their property in order to complete a construction project. And sometimes the negotiation gets into, um, well, does that mean you're gonna leave dirt somewhere? Or how long are you gonna park the trucks? Or are you gonna be responsible cleaning it up after, so forth? So, but generally speaking, they last for however long you need for the project. Typically, they're about one hundred and twenty days. We usually do six months and that's a little long. Um, but it just allows the guys to, the people that are doing the work, parking trucks to move the dirt.
So are you saying the easement needs to get that, we didn't need to go to council?
No, I don't think so. I think we can do it through the utility. Cause it's a temporary construction easement, that means it has an end date. So they, they, uh, they stop having any legal effect or authority after a certain, they sunset, basically. I guess my, my question too.
I think they go through.
Cause they probably have a, a route that they would like us to take, cause we're gonna go from there to six, to here. So. Okay.
Who has a rail? Your same tribe.
Yeah, the contractor is coming down.
The contractor has a route that they wanna take, or are you talking about the property owner?
Well, the property owner.
We don't want you driving through the middle. We don't want you going around the back of the paintings all day long.
Yes.
Yeah, you can do that as part of, you can, I guess, as part of the agreement, as part of the construct, temporary construction, or you just do it as a separate.
Okay.
That, that's just, that's six of them.
Yes.
And if they have one, sure, as long as it's reasonable and safe for the public. We don't wanna interfere with the business, right?
Alright.
For the nineteenth, is that an acceptable date? It's next Tuesday?
I think so.
Yeah, and it, it, it takes, the hardest part is making sure you have the right property owner. I'm assuming that Washington Prime still owns that property, but.
They do.
Okay.
For now.
Alright. Is there anything else you need from your own?
Have you ever had that birds and bees conversation with your son yet? I would hate to sit in on that. Now, you know, there's these things here, but you also have to consider these things here, but both of you are legal either. Oh, my gosh.
Need to be too old to have children.
That's the plan. That's the plan. I'm gonna make it so boring he doesn't want.
We got anything else?
I, I have nothing else on the agenda. Oh, utility board comments. Yes, Joe, anything today?
Nothing from here.
Michael? Chad?
No, sir.
Alright. Russell? Good deal. We agree. Alright, Natalie, anything for you? Alright, alright, with that, uh, the next meeting will be Wednesday, September the tenth, unless there's a need for a special meeting to get these things voted on, to get moving on the RFQ and what have you, but.
It's gonna take a while, man. I doubt it. We can get down to that, so.
Okay.
Cause I have time two weeks, a lot of stuff.
Okay, well, that's it. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming.